I'll call a meeting in the order of Blackwell City Council's seating. Welcome everyone. If you'll join us, stand, jump, leave us in prayer, and bow and clap salute.
Father, we give you, uh, we give you thanks for life that you've given us and we, uh, Father, we, uh, we value the freedom that we have to meet as we are. We thank you for the freedoms that we have that, uh, this country, uh, enjoys. We thank you for those that, uh, have given up their time and given up their lives, Father, that, uh, we might enjoy. You said, "Actually bless our time together and, uh, make this meeting be just pleasing in your eyes, but pleasing and profitable for the, uh, city of Blackwell." In Jesus' name.
Let's lead. Goodbye. United States of America. Consider our purpose as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item number special presentations.
Yes, if I could have the street department call please? A lot of times these guys are taken for granted. They always seem out on the streets and they're like, "Man, it's hot." These guys are always out working in steward conditions. Not only do they manage all the parks and know everything for the city, they're constantly fixing roadways. Project came up, was that two weeks ago? On the 400 block of South First, these guys got in there, tore it up, replaced the whole street, what, three days? Three days? Well, I just wanted to extend my prayers on behalf of the city. You know, these guys are really awesome. You can't really pin one that's better than the other. They get out there, they give it all they have and, uh, I had the privilege of going working with them one day as well. So, I just can't thank anyone enough for what they do for the city and, uh, just want to recognize them and their efforts and, uh, presenting this to you today.
I'd like to say how much I appreciate these guys. They work hard, they're the heartbeat of this department. They're the ones that make the wheels go around. I just point them in the right direction over there with that. I appreciate it.
Moving on to item number four, public comments.
Greg and Jessica Pepper.
Hello. Hello, everyone. In these council meetings, when I was a young man, seemed to always make me nervous. You won't bite. So, I come in here to speak about the proposed new ordinance granting cable to be franchisees. The economics of that to support two fiber-to-the-home businesses, my plan, third plan, almost make it impossible for one of us not to fail. The miles of plant that exist in this community represent approximately fifty homes per pipeline. Now, if, and he admits, construction costs would be around two point five million dollars. That puts it at fifty thousand dollars, uh, per mile on this end of the map if you sell it as possible. That's, uh, a thousand dollars a home. If he gets twenty percent penetration, excuse me, we looked at the Blackwell City Market, did drive outs, counted their, their homes, counted their drops or hooked up to the fiber system and measured linear miles. Their penetration is less than, than twenty-five percent for what we came up with. They might have a few little higher density spots or not. But what happens is if they have a twenty percent penetration in something like that, we're talking five thousand dollars per pipe. And if they get twenty-five percent, they get four thousand per pipe. So, somebody's got to pay for that. And, you know, generally the investors are, they really want to take back home. They all like to take at least ten percent. So, if you looked at just Blackwell, you'd be looking at, you know, four to five thousand dollars per customer. Investors here at ten percent would be four to five hundred dollars. That's just for the profit. Now, you got to look at your debt servicing at four thousand. You got to look at your maintenance, your bandwidth costs, your insurance, all of your expenses. That work. When you have two hundred homes per mile, the, uh, the map could work. Add some more additional people. And when we ever did overbuilds, our main goal is never to make less than a hundred and seventy homes per pipeline. Blackwell just can't support two fiber-to-fiber competitors. I'll get in a little bit about that. And we are essentially, our, our customers are paid for us to be here. We're, we don't have debt, nobody backs. So, we've been here in Blackwell for twenty-two years, I mean, cable business of forty. Been serving Aaron and Blackwell Road for twenty years. We've already built the entire fiber backbone to do the, uh, PA network for the fiber-to-the-home network. It's built. We've already installed the strand throughout the entire city, sixty miles of that. And there's no pole changeouts that would be required in the city to put up any money to fix any poles. We're already on. It's done. We've invested approximately five hundred thousand getting ready to do the FDTH. We've got over two hundred fibers in place and that's served at least thirty-two hundred homes. And we've completed sixty miles of strand. We can lash the fiber-to-the-home system on. We have on hand over one hundred thousand feet of fiber. The downtown fiber project is done. We're ready to start pulling in fibers to the business now. We've already done our mapping, it's completed, we've been praying with us. Brett Howard performing cost analysis on palm versus cheap palm, uh, other methods of delivery. The internet infrastructure's already in place. We already have the fiber pipes in from AT&amp;T, we have fiber pipes in from Indian Nations. We've already had a large pipe to compick increased speeds and fiber technology. Greg, if you want, if you want to speak some more during the public hearing time, we could converse back and forth, but just during the public comment time, the council, we're, we're not allowed by, you know, all the public records, no meetings to conversate back and forth, so if you want to wait, a couple items down, Intendent will have the actual public hearing for that. Brett. If you want to wait for any more then, or you can, uh, yeah, just a heads up.
We'll wait till we, that way you can, wait till somebody's.
Yeah. That way, that way gives you a chance that we can actually communicate from that.
Tracy, any more public comments?
No, sir.
Then we'll move on to item five, consent agenda. Questions on our consent agenda, second?
No, I approve.
Trey?
Greenfield?
Aye.
Houston?
Aye.
Webb?
Aye.
Moving on to item six, it's going to be reports.
Okay, for August, we did three hundred and forty-six letters, forty-five verbals, and about fifty-eight that the Thank You Doorhangers and Team has won hundred now. And we have five citations. At King Post, we sent twenty-nine to our contractor. We did three to lap posts. At a hundred and eighty comply, we did five contractor licenses, twenty-three permits, and three garage permits and two door inspections.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, for the month of August, uh, police patrol, a hundred and thirty-eight traffic stops with forty-eight citations and a hundred and twenty-one warnings. We worked six accidents, all of non-injury, made ten arrests. Dispatch took six hundred and eighty-four calls for service, brought a year-to-date total of five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven, uh, three hundred and eighteen, uh, E-nine-one calls. I brought the year-to-date total of two thousand two hundred and fifty-four and other calls was one thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven. And that's going to leave us at fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine for, uh, the year. Animal control, uh, dogs impounded, it was twenty-five cats, a team. Animals sheltered at the end of month with six dogs. We had no bites this month, which was the first time in a long time. We transferred four to nonprofit and we adopted ten out. We gave six verbal warnings and three citations. And then, uh, yesterday, we started a new officer, Morgan Putnam. He comes to us from Watten. He was a, been a thirteen-year veteran of the Army. He left for SEAL with his family, so, uh, he's got a place here and, and we're excited to have him and hopefully I'll get him up here and introduce him soon. So, uh, we're excited about that hire. He's, uh, he's not police certified, so we'll have to send him through some training and stuff, but, uh, excited of getting somebody else on board.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Uh, fire department responded to twenty-three calls, four structure fires, one of those being in Bramon and one being in Talk Ball. Uh, five dress fires, six MVA's, three false alarms, two vehicle fires, and three alert investigations. Animal Service responded to a hundred and fifty-five calls, six ALS transfers, twenty-three BLS transfers, four canceled en route, seventy-two transported patients, forty-seven fusils, and three events standbys. Football season's going strong. Uh, brings the total month to a hundred and seventy-eight calls. Grand total's a hundred, eleven hundred and eighty-three EMS calls, two hundred and fifteen fire calls, for a total of thirteen hundred and ninety-eight calls for the year so far. We got to do some great training this past month. There were six or seven of us went up to Bramon for grain bin awareness, or grain bin engulfment. Uh, they built a new big three hundred thousand bushel farm up there right off Highway One Seventy-Seven, so between them and PTC over, uh, Pocket, brought that grain engulfment class up here for us. Great training. And then also Homeland Security funded, uh, advanced auto extrication class for us. It's about a five or six dollar class. They funded it for us. There was fourteen of us from our department. Glennpool, Liberty, and Bramon, and Frederick, all, all got to participate in that training. It was great training. Paul Everly donated five cars to be cut out. Blackwell Towing donated four and one bus. Strickland Towing donated a bus and then let one of their big trucks come down here and let us use their truck, you know, our extrication process. A lot of times that extrication class don't get that extra truck and, and their personnel, which was a great help. I do want to thank, uh, the street department. They sent down some heavy equipment to flip the cars around for us and an operator, and then they come down and swept up the parking lot for them. The blacks that we couldn't sweep up, the fine shards that come swept out for us, but the streets we were as much as we appreciated. PD, they come down, did some extra patrol, make sure the cars were secure at night, so kids didn't get in there and mess with them. Uh, want to thank them for that. Electric Department loaned some, uh, canopies for shade, which is much appreciated. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Um, our title of physical circulation for August was twelve hundred and twenty-five items. Uh, virtual library circulation was two hundred and eighty-nine for a total of one thousand five hundred and fourteen items. Year-to-date, nine thousand three hundred and fifteen physical items and two thousand and one virtual items. So, all told, we have circulated eleven thousand three hundred and eighteen for the year, which is awesome. Um, by using the library, our patrons have saved, um, twelve thousand five hundred and seven dollars and ninety-three cents for, um, physical plus two thousand eight hundred and ninety for virtual. So, the total savings for the month, fifteen thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-three cents, which is a huge savings for the community. Um, year-to-date savings, a hundred and four thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and one hundred and ten cents. So, we had a hotspot circulation of twenty-four for August, a hundred and eighty-nine for the year. We added a hundred and eighty-six new titles, um, to the shelves and six hundred and seventy-one needed. So, year-to-date, we have added one thousand four hundred and fifty-one new items and we have deleted eight hundred and fifty-eight holdings, which, um, that equals the three percent benchmark libraries lookout for reading the collection each year. It's just kind of steep. Um, our collection now has twenty-three thousand two hundred and seven total holdings with a value of three hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-three cents. And I just want to say we really appreciate our new budget and the boost you gave to our materials, so that's really going to help us bring everything up. We had nineteen new library cards in August, year-to-date, a hundred and forty-eight new cards. Patrons used the computers, um, these are the ones in-house, eighty-three sessions, um, year-to-date, seven hundred and fifty-one uses. And two hundred and seventy-five individuals accessed our Wi-Fi for three thousand eight hundred and two sessions. The staff served three hundred and twenty-eight meals, a hundred and sixty-seven snacks. For August, we did end our meal program the day before school started, but this year, my staff served three thousand five hundred and seventy-three meals and four thousand two hundred and sixty-four snacks. So, we feel like we've accomplished quite a bit in a seven and a half months. Um, and the assisted nine hundred and ninety-eight people during the month. Um, in other great news, we got our state report finished and then our numbers looked really good in spite of the fact that it was a pandemic year. Um, we have purchased some games and play equipment for our family Play Street. And Play Street is kind of two things. One, we're always pushing different kinds of literacy and health literacy, games, activities is one thing. And the, also, the other part of it, besides the family bonding time, is that maybe the kids don't have access to some of the games and equipment that we have and they can come and play. So, that's going to be a monthly thing, we're going to try to, um, build on that. We did receive a renewal grant from the Oklahoma Partnership for School Readiness. You might remember a year ago, we got one of those for early literacy and they had some more funding and we were able to get another twelve hundred and fifty dollars to, um, spend toward our early literacy, which would be our board books, um, our infant and toddler programs, and our preschool programs. So, we're going to add some story sacks and kind of increase, um, our infant, um, programs. We will receive a network upgrade with our Category Two funding, which will be at no cost to us. It's going to be great. We have gone with Bolt again as our internet provider and, um, they will also be our network people. So, we've got one guy to go through on all the memory names. So, our prememorial, we purchased equitable readers for the collection. We've had parents ask us about, uh, materials for kids who have dyslexia and other reading problems. So, we were able to buy these books and we'll have those kids ready to go out anytime. And we've also added some bilingual books to the collection, which have been really, really popular. And there's a great opportunity available for a program, now he just sent us out to Jerry. Um, we got our regular hotspot loan program through other state and county extension and may ERP, which we have continued and the hotspots are out constantly. And the new project that has her world digital navigator and that person, they would hire to come in and help troubleshoot hotspots, explain to people how to use the technology, and help sign them up for the benefits with the emergency broadband or sign them up for low-cost internet, which we can do at the library, but we don't publicize that, you know, if you're income level, you know, please come see us. And really, we were, um, we're perfect for this program because over thirty-five percent of our people have no internet and fifty-three percent of our population makes less than twenty thousand dollars, so they can't afford internet. And the new normal is going to be digital. Let's face it, we're going to be, have to be online. Things are going to, no more paper, no more faxing, got to be able to do it online. So, that's the direction we're moving to support the community. And we're also eligible to apply for the Arthur Grant and I'd be able to do that, it'll be another thirty-five hundred dollars, which will assist dusty places, hotspots, and towards this digital navigator, things like that. So, that will be a big help. My commercial for the evening, September is library card signup month. Now, all the money you can save to the library thing, now all the great programs there are, is you have a library card. So, if you don't have a library card, I'm looking at you, Jerry. Be sure you come get one or send it to me when you need it. Tell me how many cool things have got going on. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Lisa. It's very good. Cheers.
I thought I was off the hook.
Oh, that's all, it was just teasing.
The month of August, street and parks department, uh, we've been doing a lot of spraying. We sprayed all the ground, the parking lots of the, the parks and pools and that, uh, weeds to kill back the grass. We also sprayed all the edges of the walking trails of the parks and on the climb trail to kill back the grass. We sprayed the creeks for weeds. And then we also had an infestation of army worms. So, we sprayed all the parks and fairgrounds for army worms. We've been doing a lot of spraying as well as keeping up with the mowing. The mowing has slowed down some, so that's a good thing. Gives us more time to do the spraying. Um, we have closed down and covered Memorial Pool for the season. I'd like to thank the electric department for helping us out there getting the tarps over, over the fence and stuff. Splash pad, we'll go ahead and be open until the weather cools down. Bladed and rock three alleys, repaired ten water cuts. We cut new drainage on hole nine out the golf course. We had to go about halfway across hole nine out there. That covert pipe that goes under the road was all backed up, so we wanted to get that drainage, had to cut a ditch across hole nine. I appreciate the golf course working with us. They closed down that hole while we were out there working, so that made it nice. And then, as Jerry said, we built down the four on the block of South First and then did two and three over there. And, uh, I'm just kind of, uh, I haven't been here in the last couple of months to give you reports, so I kind of want to back up a little bit. Last month, we overlaid the seven hundred block of Edgerton. Also extended that street about forty foot to catch all those houses down that street. And we also did the twelve hundred and thirteen hundred block of West Oak Home. So, now the home street's been all the way from Ninth Street to Thirteenth Street. We're currently in the process of patching up Lincoln Street from Ninth Street to Thirteenth Street so that we can do an overlay on that street too, so we can get some stuff done. Any questions?
There are a lot, there are a lot of good comments about the, the streets.
Yeah, I, I had one. That was, they're just saying, "What's, what's streets next?" They were, they were lacking what they saw there on First, really on First Street.
We, we've been working the past, well, this week pretty much, uh, patching up Lincoln Street, uh, so that we can just do an overlay on that street better or something.
All right. Thanks, Jerry.
Well, I feel a little hamstrung, Mayor and Council, because there's a lot I want to talk about, but I can't because it's on the agenda we have got there yet. Super excited to see this agenda. It's been a great day for Blackwell today. Those details will come out as the council meeting proceeds. Main Street, they've pretty much finished up. The good thing that I love the most is they fixed the intersection of Main and Dooling. I was super happy they took it all the way to the north, to the North Bridge, and they ran it all the way to the East Bridge. So, super happy about that. The Main Street beautification project, uh, has really taken off. We've had more businesses apply, we've had more businesses on Main Street, uh, taking advantage of that project. I'm super excited that we were contacted by a business owner, which would be right across street from the Co-op. They're going to paint a mural on that wall, uh, in dedication to veterans. So, I think that's going to be really cool when that gets finished, coming in from north of town. Code and Admin, and I believe there were some others, forgive me if I don't mention everybody, went over and painted the Senior Citizens Center. Paint Oklahoma, grant we, we received. Uh, they went out there and they painted in the heat and it looks really good over there, so got some new paint on that. I really appreciate Admin. As you all know, if you look at the agenda, there's a lot going on and Admin's just been superior up there. We ask a lot of them up there and they just knock it out of the park every time we ask them. We really appreciate them. I want to thank the Police and Fire Department. They paid for the air evac insurance for a year for all high school sports and up to fifteen coaches. Both unions added up and covered that for the schools this year. That covers all, all of our athletes at home and away, and if you're a visiting high school athlete, it covers the visiting athletes as well. So, I was really proud that the union stepped up and did that. I want to thank the electric department for going to the middle school, hanging those tarps. Really appreciate you guys going down there doing that. Other than that, that's about all I got. Like I said, it's just a really exciting time for the city of Blackwell right now.
All right. Moving on then to, uh, business. Seven A is considered to mean to executive session to confirm a matter pertaining to economic development. The city of Blackwell discussed a proposal to entice the location of a residential home builder to the community to deconstruct single-family residential structures. This public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with development and implementation of this proposal pursuant to Title Twenty-Five, Section Three-O-Seven, C-eleven, the local statutes as amended. Phil Luke.
Say.
Tracy.
Greenfield?
Aye.
Houston?
Aye.
Webb?
Aye.
Look for motions in reach of the incorrect position.
Sorry. Who was the motion from? I'm sorry.
John.
Okay, sorry. Greenfield?
Aye.
Houston?
Aye.
Webb?
Item C is considered approval of economic development agreement with the city of Blackwell, Oklahoma municipal corporation, the Blackwell Municipal Authority, a public trust, Blackwell Economic Development Authority, a public trust, and Freedom Homes Company, LLC, Oklahoma Limited Liberty Company.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it. Tracy?
Greenfield?
Aye.
Houston?
Aye.
Webb?
Moving on to item D is considered approval of economic development, real estate contract with Blackwell Hospital Trust Authority, a public trust, Blackwell H, or sorry, PHTA Holdings, Inc., Oklahoma Not-for-Profit Corporation. The city of Blackwell, Oklahoma Municipal Corporation, the Blackwell Municipal Authority, Public Trust, and Grand Lake Mental Health Centers, a not-for-profit Oklahoma Corporation, for the location of a twenty-four-seven emergency mental health facility with joining mental health, clinic, crisis unit, joining the public hospital. Absolutely agree.
No second.
Tracy?
Greenfield?
Aye.
Houston?
Aye.
Webb?
Aye.
Moving on to item E, consider matters pertaining to the holding of a public hearing on a new CTA provider and the adoption of a new permitting ordinance for the CTA providers. Just move on to item E one. The conduct public hearing pursuant to resolution of the city council, city of Blackwell, Oklahoma, A, notifying the public that there will be a public hearing held on the second of September twenty twenty-one at or after six P.M. and the city council chambers, city council, city which hearing is held pursuant to the request of the potential, excuse me, potential Clarity Telecom, LLC, the operator, to operate community antenna television system within the corporate limits of the city of Blackwell, Oklahoma, with the purpose of such hearing to, one, identify the cable-related community needs and interests, two, review the technical two, review the technical, legal, and financial ability of a cable operator to construct and operate a cable system during any proposed term of any permitted ordinance; B, directing the city clerk to publish this resolution in the newspaper of a general situation within the municipality at least once, not less than five days prior to the date of the hearing. Now we're in the public hearing time to discuss. That permission to the state. Any comments on the public on this, Greg? Want to continue?
I've got to finish up fairly quick. So, as most of you know, we've been springing fibers throughout the entire city for basically the last two years. Updating our internet systems, doing lots of it. Let me see if I can just kind of stick with the plan. Make a good question. So, we, as a cable operator, I find this a little bit crazy that they're using the cable franchise when they don't really intend to cable as it's defined in the ordinance. The ordinance that I operate under specifically states, the cable service is a one-way transmission to subscribers of video programming. And a cable system means a facility consisting of a set of closed transmission paths and associated generation reception control equipment that is designed to provide cable service. So, from my understanding, if one of our customers who has just basic cable, she's going to have to buy internet in order to have cable TV. So that would be two services and greatly increased cost. So, I don't see this as really the right vehicle to use to public ways and means, streets. You know, we've also got, I won't particularly get into this, but we've got a CCN, which is called the Certificate of Independence Necessity through the Corporation Commission, which allows me to work any system throughout the state of Oklahoma without franchise. As long as AT&T basically is existing there. So, the cable franchise is just kind of a weird vehicle for this to be operator, especially when I'm having to carry fifty-eight channels or eighty-six channels, but it's driven, okay, now we're carrying a hundred and thirty-two channels. And it's very expensive to maintain this head-end system. Each receiver now is six thousand bucks a piece, it's a very sophisticated piece of computing equipment. And then it's got to be launched into additional equipment that's also at a ten, twelve thousand dollars a box. So, the amount that just has been dropped at our head end is at least three hundred and fifty thousand. And the upgrades that we did to the internet system are another three hundred and fifty thousand. So, there's been a lot of upgrades. When we, when we look at this, then it just seems kind of a strange way to go about conducting business if they want to just add it. I'd say to more than telecom companies versus cable companies, because they're not going to, in my reading of it, just provide cable TV as a son of a, maybe they have, but if you have to spend more money, you know, we do cable for sixty-nine dollars, you get a hundred channels. If you do internet with that, thirty-five dollars. So, it's a hundred and four dollars for cable and internet. So, if they do kind of the same features, it's still going to be, you know, approximately the same cost. Other than the consumers will know, oh, we're going to have access to being able to just buy potentially basic cable. So, again, I don't think that two fibers to the home guys are going to be able to compete in a small market in this small town. We don't have two ballmarks inside of town, which doesn't promote it, I guess. Well, oh, but operating in a small town's hard enough. So, plug it back in. Some of the things that we could look at are what's going to happen to the ice line. We keep having, you know, we've dropped probably five hundred lines during this last ice line. But we've all, all the back end, all our customers going, before they had their electric restored, they didn't really know, I mean, they knew they were out, but we had it all, all up and going. If I got five hundred dropped lines of fiber laying down around from all the trees, I can't repair that day. Takes a little bit longer, so it'll get a little more complicated of things. So, maybe we can decide something that will help not let them completely tear out. So, we're looking into that too. Some of the sections that need to be, I think, looked at are fourteen-one, seven, fourteen-five, eight.
Of our franchises.
Of our franchises. So... There, this thing is forty pages long, is it? Forty-five pages of?
It's forty pages of franchise and eighteen pages of whole connection with the Blackwell Municipal.
And then another fifty pages to do just with making sure that we refine our customer procurement orders and all sorts of regulations.
Consumer protection.
And not only do we operate with that, we operate with FCC rules, checking line measurements, doing CLI reports. It's just, but that's, that's neither here nor there. The problem I have with it is economics for a small town. Ultimately, it's going to end up driving up costs to the consumer. There's almost no way around it. So, either we have real low prices for a while, or it says that business, kind of like what happened last time. And we're looking at the same, same time. And as you know, I think one of the kicking points would be the poles that are going to have to be replaced. There's a lot of, the city's going to have to take possession of a lot of the old bell poles and change those out. There's no way that they're going to support war on them. So, they're kind of, they're done. And the bell sold eight, a lot of poles. So, we've already invested hundreds and hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars. We've got two hundred fibers trans throughout the whole city. Got sixty miles of strand already up. We've got a hundred thousand feet of fiber, I'm just repeating a few of these things. Some of you have to see some of the fiber that sits outside my building. Got other storage and all of that. And the thing about it is, since we've got it already all in the ring, I can show you the map. All we've got is forty more miles of fiber put up. Now, to some of you that might see it a little daunting, but it's really not, I can put a mile up a day. So, well, at least I could when I started. But I can put it up pretty quick. And the thing about it is I can buy all the fiber and finish the fiber up on poles for approximately sixty-five thousand microns. So, we can finish this job and keep prices down and not add two and a half million dollars for somebody to pay for it. Or even two million dollars for somebody else to pay for it. So, there's, there's a lot of things to consider, and economics is basically the main thing. Can we have the money? We've got the talent. We've got you covered, we're getting ready to fully update that. If you look at additional people who are competing for these few dollars of money for internet, we've got the guy who's launched twenty-five thousand satellites up in his base, and they're starting to run around right now. That's, Elon's going to launch his pretty quick. They're also taking over our bandwidth on satellite frequencies, they just took it over. They just auctioned it off, they just got the money for it. So, all the cell phone companies are now going to be greatly geared up in order to completely provide people through their cell phone and hotspots and, and set a reasonable price. Other than, if it gets worse than that, we've got just everybody trying to get into the dad business. It's, it's a good part of our business now. But I'll, I'll stop there. On this topic, we've, we've already invested, we've got it done, I've got the money, I can build it, I can finish it, and I can do it in a quick timetable. We're ready to launch the business internet downtown now. It's, we've dropped a few lines, and there we go. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you both. Sure. Mayor, Council. Same thing, Mr. Mayor. Pleasure being here, giving night, this evening, wanted to make a few clarifications. We do offer cable television as well as high-speed radio. You can choose one, you can choose both, we're good either way. I do agree with the gentleman that just spoke. It is a little bit foolish to have two sets of plumbing into a home, two sets of electricity into a home, two sets of fiber and coax into it. That, I wasn't aware that the fiber existed in the infrastructure that it does today. That was new to me. You know, whenever we started visiting the city of Blackwell, you know, individuals reached out to me for some type of direction and assistance, simply because we're building out Enid, we're building out Perry, we're building out Stillwater, Tonka Long, Longusville, Bathory, Long, et cetera. With respect to the statement about driving up prices, I would, I would respectfully disagree, simply because now there would be two providers to choose from. The consumer would have a choice of an existing provider or a different provider, should we continue down this path after the information that I learned this evening. At the end of the day, we would be pleased to be a part of the Blackwell community. Again, I grew up in Perry, I've been in telecom since I left Oklahoma State in ninety-three. And I just wanted to make a couple of those clarifications that we, we do offer cable television service over our fiber infrastructure. Our minimum offering would likely be five hundred gigs symmetrical to homes, with homes having the ability to go up to five gig symmetrical service. And ten gig, ten gig at a commercial level. The gentleman referenced long-haul pipes being available from any nation, it was came out of AT&T. Totally agree. We're buying multiple hundred-gig pipes out of all of the markets that we're going in, and even considering just purchasing some of that long-haul asset. There are a number of regional players in the area that have piqued some interest, given the amount of backhaul that we're going to be purchasing from the different municipalities that we're engaged in. So, you know, at the end of the day, again, to be honest with you, I did not know that fiber was strong on poles in the alleys. That, that's, that's, that's a nuance that, that is an interesting to think about. I completely agree. None of us have two sets of plumbing in our home, you don't have two different sets of electric in your home. Individuals need one. Again, disagree on the, on the price, cost to consumers. We're fighting this bill, I'm not asking for a single dollar from the city of Blackwell. Don't want any of the taxpayer money. Happy to do this all on our own. This is utility, like I described last time I was here, the last time the coax media analysis was in the mid-eighties. It's a thirty-five to forty-year length investment when you consider it. Our timelines for payback, the gentleman who's referencing financially validity and things like that, we have really long timeframes for the payback of this asset. It is a utility, it needs to be thought of in that manner. It doesn't need to be paid back in twenty-four, forty-eight, six years. It's a different game in this particular space. So, you know, at the end of the day, maybe there is further discussion with the council about which path we go down. Maybe there's some type of collaboration, cooperation. I'd be all ears and be happy to answer questions, and maybe even visit with the gentleman about the asset that he has in place. But there's, what I, also, I'll end it with this. The citizens of Blackwell deserve a service just like the citizens of Chicago and New York and Los Angeles. That was why I came back to northern Oklahoma, because I built markets in those areas. And it made no sense, and it really upset me, that individuals here, where I grew up, even though on the other, we spent a lot of time here, grew up, there is no reason why you shouldn't have as reliable of a technology as exists in Los Angeles and New York here. Take it in the FLC. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Would it, would it make sense for having this new information, perhaps, that, you know, the two of you, you know, discussing, if there may be mutual interest or there may not, but, you know, to the extent that you know what the product is, you may need to assess this and see if this is the right community.
Sure.
Or like you said, see if there isn't some synergy or something that can be done here. I'm sorry, I've been kind of rushed. You know, they probably, I did know it had a fiber backbone. You know, what we don't have right now is we don't have fiber to the home, you know?
Right.
And fiber to the home doesn't exist in, in right now.
Right.
Maybe it could, you know, maybe it could in a little bit of time, but it doesn't, right? And, and that's really, you know, the purpose of your, of your proposal. And, and I agree, two, you know, two fibers into the home doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And the other thing that I want to tell about Get Real, because they're such delightful people, I mean, I really mean that. And, you know, we, we had a, we had a hearing on your, on your request for your franchise, and COVID hit, you know? And then we had another hearing, you know, after COVID hit, and we had that here. And then we needed a, you know, because we hadn't gotten all of it, and we asked for kind of a data dump back to us to go over, to ensure that you had conformed to the, to the existing franchise. We're supposed to bring that back. Well, we had different management at the time, okay? And different management set their, set, set different priorities. I can tell you that when management changed, and I made my list of things that we need to get on immediately, okay? Get real cable was the top of the list, okay? Because I recognized the delay. I think the one thing that we've learned here today, though, is that that franchise that you have, that you really don't like, we've had the chief's pieces of that, the bonds, the security, the cash, the requirement, you know, a lot of requirements. You know, you can look here at a simpler vehicle, okay? And I think that for your renewal, we can look to the simpler vehicle. And you have to admit that that's which we have. And you have to admit that that, which we have here is a simpler vehicle than the eighty-page, you know, whatever note, which I didn't write. But, you know, it was good. It was a good cable agreement and poll agreement for the time it was written. So you do deserve an apology.
I've seen the news for Grand Side.
Okay, I'd be hap- I'd be happy to give you, if you haven't, I'd be happy to give you a copy. I, I can assure you that you would be, that, that you will be happier with it than, than, than with what you have. But, but I think that-
It's thirteen pages long, but there's still something in here that, that I don't agree with, because it doesn't state anywhere that I can read that they have to have a call center or a service or anything in town. So, and we already have problems AT&amp;T and Comcast and other people come in and something goes down and your service comes out from the city, which tall, two weeks later, that's not like six and a half and eight.
Yeah. Well, those, those are, those are all issues.
Yep.
Yeah, those are all issues. And that's why it was only on the agenda for initial reading. But it would make sense, given the new information and that, that, that you do have a discussion if the parties want to.
Right.
Or, or that you go back and consider, you know, find out, you know, kind of what we're looking at and then see if, if we're the right fit. Does that make sense? And then, you know, we, we, we've talked about, uh, uh, Get Real, because it has been so delayed, getting your agreement back on, you know, the agenda, maybe even at the next meeting. And I will give you a copy right now of the permitting ordinance that you can take a look at. Uh, there may be some additional things, because you just suggested some things and I want in there-
I'd like to have somebody come in with the same. We need a support team. We need an office, the employees here to help if things go badly. Sure. Well, I don't think that we would be able to pull that off here, sir, to be honest with you. We have a store with technicians needed. We'll have a store with technicians in Stillwater. And we planned on serving, we plan, not planned, we plan on serving Perry, Tonka Wall and Blackwell from those two markets. Simply because once the service is in, if it's as reliable as I'm committed to tell you, telling you it is, then I, I wouldn't need a technician.
Correct.
I would drive one over from Enid.
Until it's-
I, I would, I would sure agree. I, in my dealings now with the other companies, it's frustrating, the phone calls, the wait, you know, to get service. Uh, I would much rather see a service center, you know, here, close, home city maybe, but not Stillwater, Enid.
Mr. Kennedy, if, if I may ask that we put in a call center in the franchise agreement, as well as four technicians into the agreement? Because then every party that operates in Blackwell using that agreement must adhere to it.
Yeah, I mean, you can't have, and that's one of the things you can't have-
So if we go down this path, then Get Real is going to have to have a call center with technicians as here as well.
And, and the thing is, is in the, there's a second state law on, on, on cable. I mean, once you offer something different, the other cable company entitled to get it. There has to be a level playing field. And of course, you know, you can't have an exclusive, uh, uh, franchise. Oklahoma has no exclusive franchise. You can't grant an exclusive. But, uh, you know, you, you can look at, uh, I mean, I, I'm not saying that legally you couldn't stick with one because you didn't think it would, would work with two, okay? But that, that goes right against the theory that you can't have granted exclusive franchise.
Right.
Let me tell you, in all the time I've been doing this work, there's never been anybody that's been competing to put in a second set of lines. This is a unique operation and a unique time, uh, because this has never happened. So I can tell you that I don't really know all the insurism, you know, because this has never happened. You know, cable went in in the sixties and, and got a little bit better in the seventies and its heyday was the eighties. And then competition arrived in the nineties. And in the last twenty years, there's been competition and satellites and, you know, and everything's, you know, everything's changing. So the, the secret, though, is it's fiber to the home and fiber to the business and reliable. So that Blackwell is the same as New York. So Blackwell's the same as Hollywood, California, you know? That's, you know, that's what you want, so.
At the same time, Bryce, that swings both ways, though, if you, you're talking about not being exclusive. You can't set the bar so high that the smaller guy can't meet that criteria either.
Oh, no, oh, no.
With having, I mean, it'd be easy.
Yeah, and, and I think this ordinance, I mean, the ordinance recognizes that times have changed. Okay? I mean, and that's the best I can say, the community really does. But, uh, but I mean that apology and I want to get that going and I've got a copy. It is here for you.
For, for what we've been operating under, it's almost a little unfair that I've been having to comply with all of this and now we're gonna delay me for two years to give me one and now we're gonna get somebody new. And I made, I have a little bit of reservations about that there.
Sir, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
You, you would- About my question. You, the last meeting, you talked about operating in, in the Dakotas or-
Yes, sir.
Can I ask, uh, how long?
So Sioux Falls has been in service since the, the mid-eighties, I believe. That's one of the main franchises that Bass Broadband operated under. And then we have begun an expansion from that time. So our private equity firm bought Bass Broadband, left the Sioux Falls into TMO. And we took over management of that and they've asked us to expand. So since that time, we are in construction in Cheyenne Way. Sheridan, Vermillion, South Dakota. We have franchise approvals, public record, Ranforth, North Dakota, Larrabee Way, Wigan Castle Way. Public record, franchise approval in Enid. I've been working with Vance Air Force Base, not requiring franchise approval, that's federal property, as well as Perry. Tuesday, September the seventh, that will be in Balesville. And then I have September the thirteenth in Stillwater. And it's just the start.
Uh, let me maybe narrow it down. What's the longest period of time that you operate?
In Sioux Falls since the early, since the mid-nineties.
And rates? You went in with certain rates? How many, how, have rates increased? How many times?
Yes, sir. Yeah, understood. And then I would, I would agree that that would be a concern. However, what I will tell you is that our rate structure, should we come to Blackwell, we'll be happy to share that rate structure at the time once we're here. Your business, if I, if I tell you what they're gonna be now, then, you know.
Can I re-
Yes, sir.
Can I re-ask this question?
Yes, sir.
When did y'all purchase Bass Broadband, the company that you worked for currently?
February the first of two thousand and twenty-one. That's when the deal closed.
So Sioux, Sioux Falls has operated since the early nineties under Bass Broadband. And the current company that you worked for purchased it February twenty-one.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're questioning about?
I think so. I think this-
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm just, the, the scenario was brought up. Maybe the town can't afford two different guns, so one's gonna go out, that leaves the other with the, you know, option to say, hey, I'm the only one now. I can charge what I want. I can raise the rate.
Yeah.
It's a risk, sir.
It could work.
I could probably look and that's, that's a good question to ask.
Understood.
I think having two keeps the checking balance.
Eric, may I add a little just something? So this requires literally four of the use of the all cord cables. But each of them has a UBS. And unless those rates are posted and told to you, this is just part of your, your guess. I think it's a little unfair that he's not gonna give all the rates. Now, you've got different rates in different communities. Maybe some, there's harder competition and there's more, but, um...
We wouldn't be investing money to not get this to be-
But some of these are no rates.
So we wouldn't-
Excuse me.
Yeah, I don't know if I even lie.
One second there.
I could be wrong.
People have difficulty hearing. So I thought you were gonna address that.
I'm sorry. No, that's fine. Just, I guess if, if the guy called us just standing by, you'd do that with him.
Yeah, just if anything.
I think, uh, one thing to point out here, there's two members of our council that aren't here this evening. And equally show, you know, we should, they should have a little chat and discuss this. So this is, you know, remind everybody, as listed, the first reading this evening. So it's, it's, you know, just literally the first reading. There's been some information that, you know, as you didn't know about, as you're gonna need to know about. There could be some things, there could be some synergy, I don't know. Possibly, maybe not. I think most importantly, I like the idea, why both businesses are wanting to provide the top service. It would be very nice to have fiber all over the community, to have the fastest internet speeds that any other larger community would have. And, uh, you know, that's, uh, most definitely the way the world is moving is quicker. Anything you get done digitally. So we're all looking forward to that. So at this point, do we have additional questions or comments for either Greg or Desi or any, any public comment? Consider public here.
Well, my comment would be that I think from a retail standpoint, which you know yourself, that I've done about thirty years of retail. So from that standpoint, I'd be interested to see how much he could offer that maybe they haven't been able to offer in the past. Cause I know for a fact that I've asked them to run stuff out to the country. When are you gonna do that? And we're still twenty-five years living here and we don't have cable. We don't have that access. So we get it through our telephone. So my question would be, can they run it out, you know, they're gonna be in Tonka Wall, they're gonna be in Stillwater, Enid. Cause my parents live in Enid. My son lives in Bartlesville. So I'd be interested to see what he could do. But I do agree with Greg that, um, we should know them out. I do agree with that.
Well, Melissa, I mean, I'll tell you, this is obviously just a franchise agreement for the city of Blackwell. So anything outside of there, that would be between you and them yourself. And I don't know that you probably-
So we're still not gonna get another one.
Have a fiber ran just to your house. I mean, we all would like to, but-
Thank you.
I think we can answer that question if you'd like.
I would love that answered, Greg.
Go ahead. Thank you. The, uh, the broadband internet fund that is being distributed now is gonna be probably in excess of one billion just for Oklahoma. And that is designed to do nothing but take it to somebody else in the country. So we have the opportunity potentially to get some of those funds to run it out into certain areas where, uh, he could get some of it to, uh, it's not quite ready, but it's getting there. Uh, she's also got, you guys are putting all the satellites up in space. You're gonna be able to get it from there, so you're also gonna be able to get it off the cell phone towers at great speeds. You know, one gig. So it's all coming, but maybe coming twenty-five years later.
Yeah, I think you're great. And, and as far as Melissa mentioned services that he may not offer that they can. I think we learned tonight that there's a fiber backbone and Greg said that there's fiber to all the businesses. It's, it's not to any business yet. Is that right, or he provides some to the city? Cause I know he ran some stuff to the city.
Right, we, while we built out, we dropped off.
I think we're good. Get you a little panel.
As, as we built out the, the fiber network, you guys were having trouble with your internet and your little satellite dishes to wireless. Didn't work well. So I was asked to drop a couple of fiber phones if I could help you guys get some interconnectivity. So we built, uh, basically home run fibers to every building that you guys had. And that's all tied back to your fire department. And if you guys will buy AT&amp;T fiber or whatever you want to buy, you'll buy one gig. But you no longer have to spend the money for every apartment to have their own private internet or try to maintain your little dishes. So that's done. That's our agreement that we provide that to you guys for seven hundred bucks a year. Did I answer any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me ask, uh, I understand there, you've got fiber out to, so, so far, I don't know what you called it now. You've taken it out there, but it's not gone into the homes or, and, and right now it's not gone into the business, so.
Right.
What are your intentions are?
Okay, it's, it's fairly simple. Once the fiber is out there, you, you attach, uh, two fibers and you attach that to a couple of splitters and hook up approximately thirty-five, fifty homes off two fibers. And then those two fibers come back to our central office. And then we heat them up, plug them into a gigabit switch or two watters being a one. So essentially, as long as I've got two fibers sitting on that side of town, I can come off those two fibers and do about fifty homes. But I don't have, I've got eighteen fibers over here, twenty-four fibers over here, eight, I mean, we've got spread out. Again, we've got two hundred, I don't know the exact number, two, at least two hundred and twenty fibers going out in every direction.
Okay, but your intentions, uh, time-wise, for example, that-
To do the businesses now. We're gonna, we're gonna pay for all the businesses and ask them what they want. And, uh, we're working on pricing. We've got about that done. So we're ready to launch it. You know, I don't know how they're gonna respond up. I mean, when they're getting internet for thirty-five dollars, it's hard for me to say, hey, would you like to pay me a hundred? I would make too many of them. Hey, uh, so we're trying to get a pricing structure that's reasonable. And I think we came up with one. So we're gonna probably put that out in the next few days. And then get you guys to help get it.
I have a quick question, Mr. Cooper. When was your initial company's launch date to let the community know that you had fiber to the home?
Well, I was ready to be back for a while. Uh, we were looking to buy another house here. So there's some other things to be done.
Sure.
As far as the, going to the businesses, we were trying to work this in phases. Number one, we had to deal with the cable TV issue and that was changed down the entire head end of the facility. The FCC, again, as I said, took half of our frequency from our satellites. So we had to put in all the equipment, revamp the whole, the whole head end. Uh, in addition, the next thing was to get our larger pipe fired up. And we're working on that presently. Uh, was hoping to have it done before tonight, but we didn't get there. So there's steps that we have to take to get where I can get out of the field and start doing the final phase of this thing. I've gotta be freed up of the head end. I've gotta be freed up of, uh, doing the UVR and doing all the- I've gotta be freed up of the head end, I've gotta be freed up of doing the UVR and doing all of, all of that. Once we were there and I was comfortable, then we were gonna start with that. So we're getting ready, if somebody called me up tomorrow and said, hey, I want fiber in my business, we just grab a piece of fiber and run it real dirty. That's it. And just tie it in, plug it into the switch, I mean, there's nothing complicated about this now that we've got a way down.
Thank you, Greg.
Well, if anything, it sounds like we're, it's interesting to have another interesting party come to Blackwell. We've already had a couple of agenda items this evening on, that have, from outside, companies come into Blackwell, have an interest here, so. It, it's good to have the interest and definitely let us learn that we'll let that Greg's got some fiber already in and. Pass forward to get that spread out, but. Council, what action is this just gonna be, approving the first reading, for further review, rest of council members to be present, or, or what action would you like to take?
I, yeah, first those statements, so just be the first reading. Think you're right, think you'd be well to see the other two council. Have, have the opportunity to provide input, ask questions.
How's second?
Tracy.
Greenfield.
Aye.
Houston.
Aye.
Webb.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to the agenda, item F, we just gave a motion to table that to the next meeting. We got to actually wait, excuse me, we gotta wait for a actual recommendation letter coming, coming before the next council meeting.
It should be on the next council meeting.
So it's just tabled?
Yeah. The motion to.
That we tabled?
Greenfield.
Aye.
Houston.
Aye.
Webb.
Aye.
Moving on to item G, consider approval of vehicle repairs for the fire department, big one, number ten, in the amount fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. To be repaired by Conrad Fire Equipment, Andrew, we can allocate budget from Fire Department capital, outlay funds for the repairs.
We sent it to the city to get, get some repairs done, I didn't expect them to find this much wrong with it. Keen pins in bad shape on the front of it, it's got some bad springs sagging in the rear. It's got some lighting issues, electrical issues, those are DOT issues. Didn't realize there was that much wrong with the truck. Which grant fourteen thousand, ain't that much when you consider the price of the truck. Do you want to set up brakes on it still? Hey, went down with some air brake problems, yes. But we do have the money in our budget, I'm just asking to reallocate that money to the first phase of this and asking you guys to approve the repairs on this engine so we can get it back, get it back in service.
Tracy.
Thank you.
Greenfield.
Aye.
Houston.
Aye.
Webb.
Aye.
Do we have any new business seeing for the city of Blackwell?
Not the city, Mayor.
None of the business, chair meeting at Blackwell City Council, convene the meeting at Blackwell Municipal Authority. Do you not see any official presentations on the VMA side of cities, move on to the consent agenda? Will it be approved?
Greenfield.
Aye.
Houston.
Aye.
Webb.
Aye.
Moving on to reports, fire department.
Everything about our reports can be very short. As you all know, the guys, line crew, and the rest of them as well, have been working diligently a long time on these growers. And I'm happy to say those guys have last two or three weeks have been nothing but the A Street project, and that's a block, or a half a block north of Blackwell Street, south on A Street to Homeland. And a half a block west on Peyton, and then a full block north towards Equity. And we, these guys have had to come in at three-thirty in the morning, four-thirty in the morning, to cut power because there's no way to hit these lines above the existing energized lines. So it was more convenient for the public for us to peel power at three-thirty in the morning than it is at three-thirty in the afternoon at thirty degrees. I don't think any of us would be standing here if I did that. So those guys have, I think, have done an excellent job, they've worked hard, so I'm glad to say that that line is now done. We've already energized one brewery that's feeding off that new line, which is that big two hundred block of South Main. And then here, pretty quick, of course, they were hollering at us saying they're ready, that Homeland will be energized, now we're waiting on them. And, and that'll be an additional big load that they've already, in addition to what they've already got. So we're excited that that's done. Those guys didn't skip a beat, they got the A Street project done, now they're working on another brewery in the four hundred blocks out first. So they're just, they're getting one done, they're slamming on the other, so. I, I commend those guys, they're not, they're not shutting down and heating, they'll shut down a little bit, come in and get a drink and cool down, they're heading right back out, so. I'm, I'm fortunate, we've got a, we've got a good staff on that, on that electric crew. We also this week have been up the brand of energizing another thou- or a thousand KB pad mount transformer for a brewery up there in addition to an R eighty-one that's been energized earlier. So that was on, online. We did have a pole hit at nine hundred block in North Night we had to deal with. And then over the weekend, we lost an underground terminator at United. Guys went out Saturday morning and United was having some issues with partial power and found an underground terminator that was burnt out, so they made necessary repairs and got that back on. Service orders for a month, eighty-one. Locates, I can't tell you, I, I didn't get that info, that's all I got.
Well, got all the big projects done, and also they changed all the banners downtown.
Yeah, they, they changed the banners, they jumped in there, tried to do that. I, I'll be honest with you, I've not paid much attention to the banners from last year, that's just not the focus in my, but we do have a lot of people. That make a phone call to me and tell me that the Fourth of July banners are still up, and would you all mind changing them to the fair banners? Yeah, I appreciate that phone call, cause I'll be honest, it's just not a focus in my right now.
Well, it's all appreciated.
It is, I, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Jim?
It's been pretty busy. We've, the crew has accomplished a hundred and fifty-seven work orders, which consist of all kinds of things. They've managed to do around sixty locates, locates kind of slow up and speed, you know, they, they slope and then they'll speed up, you just never know with locates. They replaced fifteen meters, some of those were new installs. They had to work on a, they prepared a sewer manhole on Eleventh Street, and then they helped with that one where we're chucking it late in the new road, they lowered the manhole so it would be more punctual to the road. They've been working on the thirteenth street project, the thirteenth of Blackwell, they just got completed, put the fire hydrant in today. They've been doing, it's, it's been really busy, so. Did I miss anything? Do you know us?
No, you, I prepared your list.
So we still have quite a few projects ahead, we still have a lot of sewer repairs to do, we're gonna hopefully get on them soon. Some more fire hydrants, never seem to run out of those, so.
We put a fire hydrant in chief at thirteenth and first, that should be a good one. We just killed that line out. We found out that they put a new eight inch in across the highway, across thirteenth, so instead of just giving rid of the new line, we went up a fire hydrant to, and killed it out at the four inch, so.
It's coming right from the inch straight into the fire hydrant.
Yes.
Good.
I'd like to tell you about some sewer stuff. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Kim sent me, me and Jim a message, and he wanted to know about solids delivery cost to the tonic oil landfill by testing and review. Using our laboratory, we have been able to determine and locate design bacteria to mix with the plant's digesters to biologically remove the majority of the organic solids the plant produces instead of by the mechanical means that the plant is built. The deliverable solids to the landfill have been reduced by ninety-two percent, a hundred and seventeen thousand pounds over the last quarter. And combined chemical pickup and delivery machinery operations costs have been reduced by a net seventy-two hundred dollars for the last three months' operation. With minor cost added, a full year total of this plant process would produce a net savings of approximately thirty-one thousand for this part of the wastewater operation. I have two more things. Steve with DEQ came yesterday, the plant's in great shape, we had a great review, there were only two concerns, one on the plant side, one on the city side. The only concern on the plant side was a sequence of errors that an operator had made on the paperwork when he was working out here. His work was fine, he just made a few trans- transcription errors when moving the info into our permanent record book. On the city side, Steve noted that fat particles that rise in the clarifiers that come from the restaurants not having grease traps. All in all, a great review, we should have the paperwork in in about twelve days. One of the things that he's gonna want us to consider is that we need to enclose the UV system with an AC. This plant was an early designed plant, most plants have air conditioning systems contained in the UV. There's a hundred and twelve lights in this system, each light runs at three hundred and seventy-four degrees Fahrenheit. We're gonna always have problems in summer overheating. High summer temperatures outside is ninety-five to a hundred and five, it's a challenge every year. And it's already cost us one battery colon this last month, we were over the maximum one time level limit of about a hundred and thirty CFU because the plants had overheated. When it does, there's nothing you can do, we've already taken every step. We're gonna need to figure out if we can encase that UV light with some sort of air conditioning bill to keep that cool during the summer months, because he's right. We'll get great reviews, great reviews, and then just needs some, something mechanical gets it, and he'll drive this off, up long.
It's not a very big area, I mean, what I need. Full check is the cover, it's not, need to go over probably long.
I don't feel like it would, it would take a whole lot of funds by enclosing and probably putting it pretty hard with some spray and insulation, and then air conditioning and maybe heating it. I, you know, I say that, I'm not a carpenter, in my company, you just gotta get a war. That's all I have there.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to business then, the I A, consider approval of economic development agreement with the city of Blackwell, Oklahoma Municipal Corporation, the Blackwell Municipal Authority, a public trust, Blackwell Economic Development Authority, a public trust, and Freedom Homes Company LLC, no comment limited liability, corporate company.
I'll write in approval.
A second. Tracy.
Greenfield.
Aye.
Houston.
Aye.
Webb.
Aye.
Moving on to item B is consider approval of economic development, real estate contract with the Blackwell Hospital Trust Authority, a public trust, BHTA Holdings Inc., an Oklahoma not-for-profit corporation of the city of Blackwell, Oklahoma, a municipal corporation. The Blackwell Municipal Authority, a public trust, and Grand Lake Mental Health Center, a not-for-profit Oklahoma corporation, for location of a twenty-four seven emergency mental health facility with adjoining mental health crisis clinic unit, adjoining the public hospital. I'd be with you, Greg. Tracy.
Greenfield.
Aye.
Houston.
Aye.
Webb.
Aye.
Moving on to item C is update on replacement of utilities on thirteenth street, reconstruction project.
Mayor, I'm just gonna kind of bring you up to where we're at, we received the plan back for the, doing thirteenth street renovation on replacing Blackwell. I'm gonna get with Garzian, get them down here into a meeting where we can try to get this movement forward and keep everything moving with the hospital teardown. So once they're done with that, maybe we can start working on one end or the other and get things moving along. Like I said, did receive the plans back, wasn't under budgets, of course, and got a couple of things to try to figure out, then we'll bring it back to you, but I'll have you an update on this meeting with them to get it moving.
All right, very good. Yeah, it'd be nice to see that thirteenth street. I get a lot of complaints, the public would be extremely happy to see that completely done.
We're gonna make that happen, Mayor.
That's right. Any new business for the VMA this evening?
No, sir. I have a brief moment with Mr. Ubank, so before we turn on the VMA side. Mayor, we might have something new I need to share with you. I mean, just literally, God, we. We just got word that with the hurricane, and of course, we're gonna get COVID, the hurricane. We're probably gonna need to spend about fifty-eight thousand dollars here in the coming week or two on some supplies and stuff, cause if we don't, what'd you say, ten, twelve weeks out? At a minimum. At a minimum. I've already been told by some of our district that we used, that here pretty quick, they're gonna shut us off, cause everything's gonna be sent down south, and then also up northeast where the tornadoes hit, when the hurricane went, moved up there. So I normally try, anything like, Greg's got one order sitting over there, it's forty-three thousand dollars, I try to bring that to council before we do that, I know that we can't, but in this case, I'd. Sad, I could, but I'm just gonna let you know, I may have to go ahead and do that, and then let you know afterwards, to get those brought in, not going over the fifty thousand, to get those brought in. Not going over the fifty thousand on any one, we're not gonna split them, do any of that, but we've got another order for fourteen thousand dollars worth of poles from a different manufacturer, so those two alone is gonna be roughly fifty-eight thousand. And then our economic development deal, we sure don't want that held up on our part, so, you know, we're gonna need to really get on the phone with him and start getting some numbers. But maybe some big purchases coming up, that's one, Tracy.
Well, it's understandable, and strategically, it's with the hurricane and all the other damage associated with it, it's definitely understandable, about to mention the COVID, so.
Yeah, I'd like to add, that, that sounded like a lot of money and a lot of care all at once, but it's, normally that would have been spreaded out, spread out throughout the year.
Yeah.
But because of the certainty of availability of the material and poles, especially wire, they're already warning us now on wire, and this is part of it, poles, wire, underground overhead, that we need to jump on it now while we can, because I'm afraid we're gonna get shut down. And that isn't a, that isn't a wish list, that is a list built to provide service, building new service, new primary, new poles, built to get service to all.
We're taking care of our citizens, we're cast with it, understand?
So it's still stretching out, that eight point three three every month, we're gonna jump up. We're gonna jump about half a year on that, hopefully we can stretch it.
So would, would also take into consideration, uh, new construction?
Between me and Greg, yes, sir, the best we can, on, I mean.
I didn't hear your question, John.
He asked about new construction, that's gonna take care of new construction too, I told him to some degree, yes. To some degree, yes, certainly, as, as we build, we're gonna monitor that and, and try to look into the future for this new construction that we're not all, don't already have accounting for. I know there's potential, hopefully later on, but we need to try to.
I know there's potential hopefully later on, but we need to try to hopefully grab that by the horn as well.
Very good, understand.
We're sure the council and you that we will be very diligent in this process and what we do. Tracy will adhere and show us the way.
There's a big stick and a bullet.
There you go.
I gotta witness it.
Yep.
That's a bit rough.
I really did a bad rap, but I don't, I don't cry twice, huh?
I'm sorry, Cory.
All right. There being no additional new business then, during the meeting of the VMA? Beaming the meeting of the Blackwell Facilities Authority. First item we do have on the VFA is again, the consent agenda.
Move, be approved.
I'll second. Tracy?
Rainfield?
Aye.
Houston?
Aye.
Webb?
Aye.
Moving on to business. I may, is consider approval and allocate the funds for purchase of seventy-two tons of dirt and delivery from Blessing Gravel LLC in amount of sixty-seven hundred and fifty dollars for Morgan Field Baseball Building.
Mayor, if I may, as we all know, Morgan Field is city property. It's leased out to baseball teams throughout the season. It's been a long time, I've talked to several people that have worked here for a long time. It's been a long time since we've done anything to the field. It absolutely is warranted. They have a good baseball coach down there, does a lot of good field work, and I absolutely believe that we should put this investment, it's going to be a long-term investment, if you know anything about dirt. It's going to make that field more applicable for the baseball teams that play on there. Right now, it's just years and years of erosion, and the dirt is absolutely...
One of the things a lot of people don't understand is this is a special dirt, it's not just dirt.
Yeah, I'm going to point that out.
The only place you can get it is Blessings.
Yeah, it's become very limited supply.
Yes, and that is an extremely good process, Jerry did a good job on negotiating that.
Now, are they going to, as far as supplying that soil, do they, because Blessings do that, they just deliver, the school's going to take care of that, or?
I believe the baseball coach is going to facilitate that.
Okay, good. So, the sides doing their part?
Yes.
All right.
I'd move to approve funding.
I'll second. Tracy?
Rainfield?
Aye.
Houston?
Aye.
Webb?
Aye.
Is there any new business for the VFA this evening?
I'd like to see you, Mayor.
Thank you. Being known of new business, Jeremy and Blackwell Facilities Authority. Thank you, everyone.